Old Hamilton Road, E1 pump repairs. New business correspondence, approval of minutes, and citizen form. With that, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I just again would like everybody to take a moment of silence for anybody suffering from a disease, a disaster, or war, so please just take a moment. All right, public service announcements. Chase, you have any?
I have none, thank you.
Mary?
No.
Other Mary?
None.
Then I have none too. All right, town administrators update.
Before we get to the items that are listed on the agenda, I do want to just say that today I had a visit from a Mr. Peter Memmott, who is a Sturbridge resident and a parishioner over at the church where the water tower is at St. Anne's. As we had discussed, that is up to go out to bid at some point. In the past, Sprint/T-Mobile has had a private agreement with the church regarding the right-of-way. We also have right-of-way access up there. Mr. Memmott was going to come to the meeting but then decided to come to my office. He did ask that I just update you. I told him that I'm happy to work with him, but I needed to know that he was acting in an official capacity for the church. So he is going to be getting me a letter from the local pastor saying that he can represent the church on local matters. So his basic request is that when we go out to bid that we include in that bid an awareness for whoever bids it, that they must enter into a private agreement with the church, separate and apart from us, and that we also consider looking at surveying some of our own right-of-way there. There seems to be some survey questions on that going back to 1933. We have several of these survey issues in town that I'm dealing with right now, so no surprise there. But I just wanted to update you on that, and Mr. Memmott is likely going to be my contact for that. I also notified the people talking about the Dish Booster that the board would like at least a presentation and an overview of the project, regardless whether it officially has to go in front of the board or not, that the board would like to at least see the project and be aware of it upfront to know what it is that they're even considering doing. So they were happy to comply with that, and over the next meeting or two, we will set something up for them to come in. So that's the latest on that. Nothing has moved forward on anything at this point. That's just an update for the board.
Can I ask a question related to that?
Of course, yeah.
I did get a couple that want to be notified when the board is going to allow the public to speak. So I guess this is to our chair. Will the public, whoever attends, be able to speak after the presentation or not? Are we going to do a different kind of public hearing?
Well, if it's a true public hearing, yeah.
I don't know if it's going to...
I think we can make the election at the time to do it under our rules of parliament procedure. But yeah.
They live in that neighborhood.
Yeah, it's not, I mean, it doesn't qualify under like a formal public hearing with 10 days' notice and all that because there's really no action being taken.
But isn't it up to the chair if we wanted to call it a public hearing?
If you wanted to allow the public to speak.
I mean, I don't know, they want to...
A meeting for public input.
Yeah, they've been following our meeting and the little snippet that was in the Sturbridge village.
I think the fair way to say it is that within reason, we will, because it is a matter of public policy and a little broader than our normal specific issues, we will, at the time, entertain limited public comment that's proportional to whatever's going on. And I don't, I mean, we don't have to figure it out much more than that.
Right, no.
Because I think what's being presented is so preliminary because it still would have to be vetted by planning, that it might, what they present could be totally changed by the time it ever goes anywhere.
Yeah, but if you live in that neighborhood, I think they just want to express like more of a general concern rather than a specific project that's being put forward.
That makes sense.
So that's the update on that. And then the next item is the ARPA, and I would ask that the board consider taking action on these recommendations from the ARPA committee. We met last week, and you'll see briefly what these reference. The Town Barn concession stand upgrades, it's just $6,500. The building is owned by the town, needs some basic repair, sheet rock, paint prep, paintings and ceilings. We did confirm that that is definitely our building, not the League's building. And so Recreation has requested that. Recreation has additionally requested a storage shed for $5,500. As you know, they have limited space. Her office is impossible to move in. She's got bins stacked three and four high. It's not even really safe.
Where's she want to put that?
I think they're going to put that, I think, at Town Barn or the rec facility. I'm not sure which location she, it may go at the rec facility. I know she has some storage there already. But the cost includes the grading. DPW will do some of the work and some of the crushed stone material. The whole thing is included in that $5,500. There was some concern that we can get rodents in sheds, but the reality is we need to store stuff, and it's not going to be food being stored there or anything like that. The electronic data storage project, we have already spent $50,000 or are in the process of spending $50,000. This is, as you know, we have decades, perhaps centuries' worth of material that is stored, and some of it can be removed. Some of it by law can be removed. We have multiple duplicate copies of things. We have four or five copies of documents that we really only need one. So we brought this group in to start to inventory and categorize. Ultimately, the goal with this extra 30 is to now start to move some of these documents, get them scanned, get them online, and eventually have a system where, for example, if someone wants copies of a plan to a piece of property, the public can actually eventually go on and get those plans, like through our GIS, they could click on a property and have all those plans uploaded. So this is the next phase in that. I would say this is a multiple department sort of request. It officially was brought forward by Robin and Facilities, but I know Becky actually was a strong supporter of doing this electronic data. Lynn has been a strong supporter. Our office is strong on this. We just don't have the space to keep all the paper. Frankly, it's not reasonable. If you ever had a flood or disaster of any sort, all of our records are just gone. So that's a request for that. It is expensive, but I do think it's worth the money. Town clerk pole pads, our clerk is here. This is $9,550. Because of what you're going to hear later about where we're going to be having our elections this time, we are expanding out to the host with more room. This would allow for more efficiency, more number of pole pads, will allow more pole workers to have the pads. This cost includes the six pole pads, a printer, and the shipping cost. The total cost requested here is 51,550, $51,000. We have approximately $660,000. That might be a little low. There may be a little more because some projects didn't get fully expended. They were done, but they were done cheaper than we anticipated. But just to give you a sense, we did have a broad discussion, and Selectwoman Dowling has expressed concerns about buying things that would otherwise have been in the budget. And we are looking at a couple of big-ticket projects that we otherwise in town would not be able to do without going to borrowing and whatnot. And if she wants to expand more on that, certainly.
Thank you for explaining for me.
Yeah, but I just wanted to...
No, I think it was just general consensus that.
Bring that up, yeah.
And I think they couldn't get them in time for the budget last year, and so I'll let like Lynn explain that too. But some things should be just part of the budget because ARPA money is money that we wouldn't normally have had, and I want to use it in ways that, you know, are going to leave a bigger impact rather than, you know, like a storage shed, which should be part of the Recreation's budget if they need a storage shed. And I have continued, and the committee supports, something on those triangles significant for beautification. I know we've been trying for that for a long time.
You will see a wonderful update in a couple weeks on that. We are very excited. We were out on that triangle on Friday.
Great. I think businesses will appreciate.
I'm surprised it wasn't on Facebook. There were pictures of the police chief. I figured that people would keep posting, "What's going on in the triangle?" Because there were about six of us out there, so.
Oh, good.
Very soon, we're very excited.
Because it's our gateway. But that was, but we did all support these, but in the future, if something can be in the budget, we're trying to have it part of the budget.
I thought that was important to bring up because it was, it's such a critical point on what we do with that money, not to kind of frivolously lose the opportunity for one-shot revenue like that.
Makes sense. Okay, so we have the request to approve the ARPA funding has committed, and just for the record, that is Recreation Town Bar concession stand upgrades in the amount of $6,500, Recreation Storage Shed as described in the amount of $5,500, Electric Data Storage in the amount of $30,000, and Pole Pads for the Town Clerk because of the expanded location in the amount of $9,550. Do we have any discussion about any particular items, or do we want to do this? Do I have a motion to approve all of them?
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the recommendations of the APAC subcommittee to as listed in our memorandum for a total of $51,550.
Do I have a second?
Second, ma'am.
All those in favor? The ayes have it. All right, moving on. Robin?
Yep, so the next item is an immigration update. You have a memo. Because this is all a public document, I likely will also share this memo publicly. I believe that the public will want to see it and know. Generally, I will summarize here. As of Thursday, we had 46 families. I do believe two more families have since come in that I was told about on Sunday, I think, Saturday night or Sunday. I got a text. I'm being told that some of the families at one of the hotels are not necessarily from other countries, so it sounds like we have some Massachusetts homeless that are being moved in and people from various countries. One of the challenges that that does present is some communication issues because we have multiple languages involved. We continue to monitor the calls so that we have a sense of, from a safety standpoint and a financial standpoint, what the burden is on the town directly related to the presence of people the governor has moved in. The superintendent in Tantascwa, not to step into her area, but she continues to enroll as she is obligated to by law. I did put out a DPH letter publicly on my Facebook page. There were a lot of questions about vaccines. The McKinney Vento is very clear that all students under the Homeless Act are allowed to go to school regardless of vaccination status. I will say the DPH has been onsite trying to ascertain vaccination status and has been doing visual checks and temperature checks and whatnot of the people involved. On September 14th, we did have a meeting here. It was a National Guard meeting. They just asked if they could use our space and to invite anybody that we felt was pertinent. We did obviously allow them to use our space. The meeting was held here. We had several department heads as well as many officials from the state and the Guards' members who were here. I will say that it is now the first time since all this has happened that we have had anybody who actually is providing some measure of coordination or information. I will give the National Guard kudos on this. They have been thrown into a situation, and I will tell you, I'm not sure, they had a lot of preparation. Selectwoman Blanchard was there. They really are working very hard and scrambling to catch up, to get information on the people involved and be able to properly assist those people. And one of the big things we've had is a lot of questions on donations, and they don't want things just trickling. And so if people are asking about donations or you hear questions about that, forward them to me. I am forwarding those contacts to our National Guard representatives because, as they put, their role is to quote, "connect the dots." And that stops all the chaos of what can be donated, what they can accept on behalf of the people, what they cannot accept on behalf of the people. They are doing the primary care, if you will, right now and concern of are people getting food when they're supposed to? Are people being processed? Are people who might want working papers getting working papers? Are people meeting whatever court dates or paperwork they need to have? So they're handling all of that. I'm very grateful for those particular ladies and gentlemen who are doing that work.
Did you, in terms of the Sturbridge Federated Church, is that, are they, do they know to connect contacts to them as well?
Yes, they do, and the pastors actually was on the contact list that the National Guard already had. So they know to work with the Federated Church. I've also had a couple of other agencies reach out to me, and I'm forwarding them to the sergeant that was here.
Are there items of particular need?
Winter clothes, with winter coming up, clothes, clothes and toys. Food likely will not be accepted.
Okay.
So even non-perishable.
So the foods being handled by the state?
Yep, that's, they're handling that, but...
As I say, keep a caution.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. I'll go first.
So I have had a number of people, I'm glad the National Guard's above, I have had a number of people contact me with, criticism's a strong word, so maybe concern that the town didn't organize some type of, basically what the National Guard's going to do, some kind of like food drive, but now I know the Guard doesn't want to do that.
No.
Or clothing drive. They said there, you know, one couple said we can come up with 10 people who are like waiting to volunteer. So my question is, I forward these people to you, number one. Are you going to put a National Guard contact on our website so they can contact them directly?
I'd rather they go through me. The Guard has not asked me to put out them individually. We have two guardsmen who basically are using their own emails to do this, so I would rather it go through me. I don't want to have them barraged. As far as the town organizing, I have to tell you, I wasn't even told how many people. I couldn't have even begun to organize anything because I was given no information.
Yeah, the blunt reality of the circumstance, regardless of all the, a lot of varying political positions on it, is that the town is under obligation through the Commonwealth and just to meet our obligations to these students, the principal obligations are, I mean, students, these individuals, and the principal obligations are through the educational system. As we gain more information, we'll become more organized through public safety, the schools, and all of our other service providers. But right now, we're just figuring out what's going on, and although people might be understandably frustrated with that, and we might have some frustrations as well, that's the circumstance we're in. And beyond that, there's really not too much else to say.
Okay.
Well, no, it's good that the National Guard's doing it. I didn't really have a response.
I didn't meet you very...
No, that's okay, but the comment was, you know, "We organize like backpacks for back-to-school, we do Toys for Tots at Christmas. What are we doing for these refugees?" And I said I would raise it at the meeting, but...
I wasn't even told how many children, how many people. I wouldn't have even been able to do anything that would not have been truly, I don't want to say a waste, but it could have gone completely with efforts that would have been wasted or lost, and that would have been a shame.
Is the National Guard with, you're going to say, I don't know, and I don't, are they with us for how long?
I do not know how long. I have no idea how long the families will be here. I know that the National Guard is at each hotel daily for a large amount of time. They are very clearly not security, and we need, people need to be aware, our National Guard was not put in there as a security measure. I will also say we have not had any incidents of violence or anything like that related. There was an incident, and I do want to be very clear, there was an incident at the Super 8 Hotel involving people from another country, but they were not people placed by the governor. There was a lot of misinformation about that, a presumption that it was. They were not. I have expressed repeatedly to the Lieutenant Governor at meetings that the environment that the people were placed in, and now I'm happy the Guard is there, were not environments that were necessarily conducive, I don't want to say they're unsafe, but they are not conducive to people who do not have a knowledge of our culture and the ways of life that we have and what can and cannot go on in hotels and truck stops and, you know, a truck stop's a truck stop. It's designed for people who drive trucks, do stop, and it's a different population than people who have been moved in. The National Guard, however, is at least, I think, a voice for us back to the governor's office more than my screaming and hollering that I felt that for a couple weeks people were placed in a hotel that was not really a safe environment for people who do not have the knowledge of ARPA.
The Days Inn is probably one of the worst hotels to have placed. Well, I'll just tell you why. I mean, there's no, there's no Shaw, there's no supermarket. Like, I've seen different people walking from the Super 8, from Shaw's, and they're, you know, doing the legwork and walking, and I guess it's doable, it's like a mile or so. But on Route 15, for like children to be at their Route 15 location, they have an extra, they basically have a convenience store, a Dunkin' Donuts. How do they, how do they access our main downtown, our supermarket?
And so when people ask what was the town doing, what the town was doing was every day I was asking the governor and her representatives and the Lieutenant Governor directly, "What are you doing about food for people at that particular hotel because they have no food?" And I was getting crickets. So at least now with the Guard there, there is something. We really have tried, and I know people are frustrated.
Because, you know, they're walking to that convenience store, and there's like...
That road is not safe to walk.
There's like 20, you know, tractor trailers pulling in and out of that road, and they're walking on the...
Just the logistics of the safety. Forget the environment. The logistics of that road are not safe.
Has anybody thought about reaching out to the WRTA for like a one-day trip or something just so people have like a...
Yes, so according to the National Guard, the state is in the process of contracting transportation. Not to editorialize, but a little late, but at least it's happening.
Well, but yeah, I mean, it's an exigent circumstance, so some of this is going to be late.
So there is, there is that effort to do that. We had people asking about volunteering to give rides. I cannot, again, putting whatever I might believe as humanitarian aside or any other, whatever the political beliefs are, I cannot, as a representative of the town, coordinate private rides because if somebody gets hurt, I'm in the middle of coordinating that. I can't condone it, and I can't be part of it, and it sounds horrible, but I have to...
But even beyond that, is that this is a larger structural issue, and that it sounds like the, at least as opposed to where we were two or three weeks ago, there is some structure coming together. So that's positive, and it remains to be seen where that goes, so.
Yes.
Unless there's anything else on this, Robin?
No, I think that that covers it. We're just continuing to be on topic.
So if they donate, so go through you to donate clothing and toys, and I know this question's going to be asked me, so I'm just going to say it. Can they be assured that like whatever they donate are going to be going to the families that are located in Sturbridge as opposed to going out to other locations that the National Guard is servicing?
As I understand it, the Sutton Guard, we met him, he came just for informational purposes, but the National Guardsman in Sutton, for example, was talking about stuff that was donated within Sutton to go to his people. So I do think they're somewhat isolated. It's not going to a centralized, they're trying to find a location within Sturbridge where they're going to take these donations in and distribute. And only within our town would they even have the knowledge, let's say, of who needs what. Now, if there's things that are donated that aren't needed by the families here, I don't know if they will then look for other families who might need it in other communities. But the implication that they gave was that whatever came in would be distributed here because they're talking directly to the people to know what they need.
So they'll tell, they'll sort of organize that. Need to wear clothes in these sizes, that kind of thing.
Yeah, so does any kind of detail, especially as the cold weather comes, we don't want anybody to, you know, die.
I believe the Federated Church, I met someone today who came in about that, and she said that she actually was given, which I cannot get from information, the ages and probably sizes of children in the hotels.
Okay.
So they are, there is, there is work going on. The other thing is if people want to know, they might want to just call the Federated Church because the Federated Church has more information than I do.
I, I, let this, different people know that, and God bless the Federated Church, they want to go through this. They want to know what, if the church can do it, the town should be doing. So I'm going to point them to the National Guard, and you can point them to the church as well, but...
Yep.
And they also wanted to express that they would be able to fill out any kind of forms or documentation or written material that might need to be done. And I said I didn't know anything about anything.
I don't know anything.
No, okay, so that's enough.
I don't know anything.
Chase, did you have something?
No.
Okay. So the, and again, and I think actually it's important to say it just for everybody, just thank you for the Federated Church for, beyond even this, for all they do to our community, continue to do for our community, and will continue to do for our community. They've really done a lot. All right, I think we are on to department head report from Ms. Becky Gendrow. Come on down. Have a good night, guys. All right, Becky, go ahead.
Great, good evening. Becky Gendrow, Conservation Agent. So I have the yearly department head report for Conservation for you. We've been doing these for the past couple years, reporting for the past fiscal year. So this is for fiscal year '23. In this past year, we had a few changes on the board. Last October, we lost David Barnacle. He passed away after a brief illness, and Stephen Chester. Dave was on the board for about 25 years, had a lot of knowledge and gave a lot to the town. He, you know, helped start the bylaw regulations that we had and the Frost Trail Committee there. So big loss, but we quickly got those positions filled and got back up and running. So a little hiccup with the permitting and that, but quickly move forward with that. So we currently operate, as you probably already know, but just for, we have two staff, myself, Conservation Agent, I'm full-time, and we have Erin, who's now our Assistant Agent. She works part-time, it's 30 hours, it's almost full-time. We've been kind of structuring these reports, kind of reporting on some of the changes that we've been trying to make over the past years, really trying to look at how we can increase our efficiency with our permitting. As you know, we have state permitting and local permitting, and it can be kind of a complex process for some people. So we've really worked to change a lot of our applications, streamline some reviews. We've been reporting, we have an administrative review process that we started a few years back. This past year, all of the projects that would qualify for a wetland bylaw letter permit, which we call, 96% of them were reviewed in-house through staff versus 2% that the Board had to see. So it was a total of 52 projects that didn't have to be put on agenda, didn't have to have an additional site visit by the Board, and we quickly can kind of turn those around within a week for people. So it doesn't, you know, change the outcome. These are projects that, they're outcomes that the commission would have granted. It just kind of helps keep that moving quicker for people, so I'm really happy about that process. We've also looked at, you know, some additional changes. We've had, in the past few years, we've added a detailed agenda that's been really beneficial for the Board and applicants, kind of sets clear expectations before a meeting, what people can anticipate as conditions or potential concerns, that they can bring that information to the meeting and help kind of keep that process moving along. We continue to hold the hybrid meetings, favorably received by the Board. We do have a few members that still work and travel. And as we know with, especially we saw when we had the changes in the commission members, you know, our approval processes, you know, you have to have a certain amount of members for, under the Wetlands Protection Act and the bylaw, and it can create complexities when we have some ongoing projects. So that's been really favorably received by the Board as well as applicants and representatives, representatives, you know, that might have to travel can come online. It's a little more efficient for everybody, so we've been working through that. I've included a table, we've been adding these in for the past couple years, just kind of going over what our permitting numbers are. We saw a big increase in certificate of compliances that we received this year, which is great. This is part of the process that usually gets forgotten about by an applicant. At the end of their project, they do need to close that out with us. Unfortunately, I think a lot of people might have to go through another department and close something out, so they might just forget about it. So this is a good way to get that closed. And what ends up happening is these are recorded on deed, so when there's a property transfer, it comes up, and sometimes there's conditions that haven't been satisfied, and they have to work to address those. It can be a lot on an applicant as well as, you know, a big push to get that work done and how we can get that permitted in through that process. So having those completed and checked off and moved along is great for everybody, so happy about that. I've been reporting over the past few years on the MASTOT Turnpike Cedar Lake Drainage Project. It's one of our ongoing kind of violation issues that we've been working with DOT on. Really great, positive project. Unfortunately, I haven't, we haven't been able to close that out, you know, with the big storms that we've seen this year that wreaking havoc on infrastructure everywhere, especially drainage infrastructure. They had a blowout in one of their things, so kind of waiting for DOT to go through their approval process of checking off a new design, and hopefully before winter we'll have that in and closed out. We had another project with DOT that, another drainage structure issue along Route 20, along the Quinne Bog River, some significant impacts into rare species habitat there. They've actually recently submitted a plan for that, so we're hoping that, not sure when it'll be implemented, but we'll have that approved soon and get some good improvements over there for stormwater. Let's see, I won't go through everything here for you, but this past year, we've seen, we've been working a lot on the Town's DEP 319 grant for this, for South Pond. That's been a project that the Town's been looking at for a little while now. I think the initial grant was awarded in 2019, but this past fiscal year, we've really been able to kind of move forward. We got the official grant from DEP on that. We were able to work with a consultant. We did, we had three notice of intent that we had to submit because that pond is in three different towns. of intents that we had to submit, because that pond is in three different towns. We had Endangered Species Act filings, we had to file with the MEPA monitor on that, work with Fish and Wildlife for boat access, and get that project implemented. So we were able to do that. They actually did the treatment right after the fiscal year change, and we'll continue to work on that. We have some grant reporting that we'll have to do for at least another six months or so. We do quarterly reporting with reimbursements, and then we'll be working on that a little bit longer with the permitting requirements for monitoring out there. But successful project, they're already seeing improvements, and I know that our, the Lake Association, others are really happy about that. So continue to work on that. We still work with SLAC on the, the lake monitoring. That was done in late August. So we had a little bit of a shift from working in late July to late August on that. We've just got the results back from the lab, but we haven't seen, you know, that comparison with past years yet. So we're looking forward to that. This upcoming fiscal year, we plan on working on, last year, we went to Community Preservation Committee. We'll be working on the conservation restriction for the Fisk Hill property that the town purchased a few years ago. So we'll be working with you folks, because you have care and custody of that, as well as recreation and trails, on what, what the, you know, uses will be for that property. It was purchased for recreation, but we'll be looking for us kind of working with an engineer and getting a survey done out there. We've had some past property line kind of concerns, issues come up, so we want to make sure we get a survey, and we can have that all established before we get that conservation restriction on that property. Let's see. Another thing is that we're working on the Plimpton property. We'll be doing a master plan. That was also through CPA funds. And next fiscal year, we'll be working with SLAC a little bit more, helping with some of their lake management plans. They'll be coming back. We've had some very historic herbicide, you know, weed management plans out there. So we'll be working with them on updating those permitting, and hopefully looking at some watershed-based plans to also look at, not only what are the concerns in the lake, but what, what may be causing those concerns too. And I think that's really important, and there might be some grant opportunities for that. I think that mostly covers everything without really going into weeds here, but, no, we're optimistic.
Becky, you probably could be here for another 20 minutes.
Sorry, I know, I know. But no, we're really optimistic looking, you know, moving forward. Really happy with some of the changes we've implemented, and we've been able to, with staff, to kind of help with, you know, a lot of our site work responsibilities and kind of have a little more time to devote some bigger picture projects. So happy to answer any questions.
Well, there aren't any questions after reading the report.
Oh, good.
Very well done.
Thank you.
As always, Becky, you've explained everything on infinite.
Yeah, I always feel like I leave too much talk.
Oh, Mary is a question.
I want to try to talk as fast as you can. Don't let me talk fast, but you are a fast talker. No, I agree with Mary. It's very well thought out, very thorough. I just had a couple. With the Plimpton property, I know you're working on the master plan, and you're working on a CR for the Fisk Hill. Are either of those locations a possibility for the ever-elusive dog park that so many residents would like to see happen?
Well, the Plimpton property that has the conservation restriction, there's two parcels there. The one that has the conservation restriction, no. Any, any property that already has a conservation restriction is very restricted already with the contract that was agreed upon.
Right. But Plimpton initially was going to have a whole section.
Correct.
For a recreational, I believe, multi-use soccer field.
Yep.
And so what about that portion?
That is, that is a.
That's not under the same CR.
Correct. It's not part of the Plimpton community force. That's a separate parcel.
Right.
That was cut out of that, so that way it could remain.
Right.
That property was purchased with CPA funds for active recreation. It could be, there, there might be environmental concerns there that could hinder some things, but depending on the size of what the project is, there's rare species there, so we'd have to navigate that permitting. So that could be open to that. We would have to go through that process and, and see. We've had in the past some initial conversations about things in that area, and the bigger a project, the more complicated, complex the permitting might be. But that, that property.
There's no CR that would legally prevent that type of application.
No. And then Fisk Hill, that's what we would need to work out.
Right.
So that was open for recreation. It's kind of a challenging property, but I've had some conversations with Annie. We met with Trails Committee, a couple of members recently, to kind of discuss that a little bit, and some different options maybe with that property and things in the area. So it's.
So when the CR is put into place, perhaps it can be done in a way, and this is just my opinion, that is not as restrictive to prevent that type of use.
Correct. Yep.
Because there's a, you know, there's a lot of people that want it. I found that when I was running for reelection, like, the last two times, a lot of the families with young children and, that's what they wanted to know. They didn't want to know about the budget, the tax rate, whatever. They wanted to know about a dog park.
Yeah.
You wouldn't believe how many people have a pet. So I just, when the Fisk Hill's CR is going into place, I'm just hoping that it can be written in a way that wouldn't necessarily prohibit that type of thing.
I think we need to look carefully as well at who we do our CRs with, because we have different organizations, and some are far more restrictive than others in generally what they expect. And a lot of that input's certainly going to come from conservation based on the species and whatever is on that land. But there is some land that certainly has more wide-range uses. And I, I really do think we need to, Becky and I need to look long and hard before we go into a CR with anybody going forward.
Well, I would go easy on that, but I do think that the, because a lot of that land is already, the reason we're ending up with, with it is because it's all pretty beat to hell already. So the, the ability to withstand larger conservation issues, like, you know, the stuff we're buying is what I'm really talking about, is different. But I do think Trails was, I thought they were talking, had a couple of spots picked out for the dog park part of it, but I might be, or tentatively.
Yeah, Trails has some ideas, and Trails has a lot of ideas, as Becky said, for Fisk Hill. I mean, that's a, they're, they're already looking at some parking areas there.
They're an incredible committee.
Yeah. So they, they're on that.
Yeah. We met with them recently, you know, with Annie, to kind of discuss some different options and what the needs for a dog park would be. So we're kind of in the works of thinking about that too, a little bit further. But also, this property was purchased just for recreation. So a little different than like, some of the properties that were for conservation and passive recreation that have the CRs on them.
Right.
And, and we wouldn't necessarily have to maybe have a specific area of that property designated when we write the CR for a dog park, but if it's written in as allowed use, that's what we could do. And we've done that in the past with parking lots, you know, half an acre parking lot in this general area or something like that. We can write that in there, and that would all be agreed upon in advance, you know, with all the parties involved.
And I think generally, just, just for people to respond to with dog parks, they think it sounds easy, like, oh, just put a fence up and call it a dog park.
Yeah.
You need plumbing, you need certain dimensions, you need separate fencing for big dogs and little dogs, you need to have drainage, you need, you need to not be in neighborhoods where dogs barking are gonna impact people. So dog, and parking and traffic. So dog parks, while they sound, people always will say, why, you could just put a fence up anywhere and call it a dog park. I'm like, not that simple. So it, it, that's why.
Nothing ever is.
No, nothing is as simple as it looks.
And we will have to look to, like, the CR partners, because it's active recreation or recreation, we won't probably be using the typical people that we do, because their missions are different.
They, they, yeah.
Yeah. So there'll be, yeah, a lot, a lot to work on on that one.
There's a lot more to it than just, yeah, like, put the fence up and let the dogs out.
No, that's fine. And I just, one other thing, it's off subject, different subject. So you sound like you are pleased with the administrative changes, us adding the administrative clerk that's working out for you.
Yeah. Yep. And we'll work with her to kind of get her up and running and trained, you know, with what our processes are, and, you know, understanding Wetlands Protection Act and bylaw and different permits we have. So it'll, it'll take some time, but I'm very optimistic that I think that, you know, they'll be able to find some administrative support for us and help us out.
Great.
Yep.
Thank you. All right. I think we're gonna let Ms. Becky go, because.
All right. Nice to see everybody.
I think we're gonna sneak, sneak you in, Lynn, next. Yeah. Because I don't know where you were on the agenda, but I don't have the updated one.
Somewhere.
I know. So we'll just scuttle it. So you don't have to hang around. Go ahead.
So basically, I'm before you this evening for the approval from the Board of Selectmen for a new polling location. We've been in contact with the Sturbridge Host Hotel for the last few months, and that's one of the reasons for the poll pads going on to the upper and not into the budget. So I'll explain. So the Host Hotel came back to us and have been very, very diligent in helping us work through elections there. They've come back with pre-COVID pricing for our use of the ballroom and also the town, or the common room for local elections. So basically, we'll be there for all elections starting in 2024. And the reason for the new upper funds for the poll pads, with the new location, of course, it's a much bigger room in the ballroom, we're able to expand our capacity. We can have now two people checking in at once for per precinct, which will help alleviate lines. Also, the additional three poll pads will go for the wardens' and clerks' table, and that will help for those inactive voters, the voters that have some kind of a problem. They can go over to the warden and clerk's table. We can alleviate them from holding up the line at the precinct check-in table, and they can be taken care of at the warden's table. And also for the early voting processing and absentee ballots that come in, are gonna be all done through the warden's tables, processed there. I don't know if you've ever seen where we've been, you know, trying to get through precincts with a handful of ballots and checking those in and then processing them through. That's not gonna happen now. They're gonna have their own separate table, because we'll have additional poll pads to check those in. So that's gonna be a big help, I think, all around. And we're able to do that now with the new location.
Great. Any questions from the board?
No questions. Sounds good.
I just want to thank Lynn. She's done tremendous work on this. She, she really, she held it together when we had to use Town Hall and made it work.
Yeah.
But she's always looking to build a better miles.
And she looks great tonight. Very fashionable.
Did she look great?
Very fashionable.
Good.
Is that, wait, is that good? You gotta go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lynn.
I appreciate it. It's always, I just agree. You're, you're always like, willing to work and look for the solution, and you always do with a smile on your face.
And, and you know, thank you. And, you know, I, I'm a resident of Sturbridge, so I want the best for the community. I want to make it as easy for the community, too. And, you know, we've looked at quite a few locations.
And the price came down from what they originally quoted.
And the price came down from, from the original quote that we had, which was astronomical. So, and it's, it's a great place. It's centrally located. Everybody knows where the, Sturbitost is.
Marquee Hope.
But you know there's gonna be somebody.
There'll be somebody on Facebook.
There will be someone.
There is it. Exactly, exactly.
Do you not need to vote for us or anything, or are you just up there?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I make a motion that we approve the new polling place at the Sturbridge Host
Hotel as presented by the town clerk.
All those in favor? The ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
What's today?
Thank you.
Day today is 18.
18.
09-18.
Phenomenal member of the team.
Oh, she's amazing.
She is. Best.
Oh, we're lucky.
Yeah.
We are lucky.
She was.
Here you go, Mary. All right. So we are now moving on to our next action items. All right, one-day liquor license for Josh, or John Samm, excuse me, at the Harbrook Vineyard and Winery, the Harvest Festival on October 14th.
I believe that everything was in the packet that you need for this.
Yep. And I don't think we've had any issues. Questions, concerns from the board?
No, he's been in before.
Yeah. All right. Do you have a motion?
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for John Sammick Greenwich, oh, what's the name of the place? Sturbridge, for the Sturbridge Harvest Festival. Saturday, 10:14 from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and Sunday, 10:15 from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? All right. The ayes have it.
You voted?
I voted.
Oh, oh, wait.
I'll vote.
Oh, I did, I did.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. We don't like you.
Oh, I.
Can you just?
Do you guys have any questions? For me, I know I'm not John, but.
No, I don't think so.
Oh, no. Mary, Mary goofed up.
I'm just gonna abstain. I'm not a fan of our own town property.
So, yeah, we'll just get that.
I have to make a motion to reconsider the vote.
Oh, she wants to abstain?
So.
Yeah. All of our, ours is off-site consumption. We just sell our bottles.
Okay.
Oh, Mary, that's.
I'm okay with that.
We'll see that in the, yeah.
Okay.
So I think we're all set then. Never mind. We don't have to do anything.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you. Thanks for all the business.
Yeah. Another red one. Good.
All right.
Those two on the end there need to sign this.
Okay. And then we are moving on to consideration and possible action on a transient vendor license for Wendy Collins on October 1st, 2023, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Doll Bear and Miniature Show at the Host Hotel. Okay.
Sounds like a wild one.
The bear and doll show.
Yeah.
And then we'll go vote.
We've approved this one before.
Yeah, I've never, I don't think there's any issues.
Yeah, the dolls are nice, but they're not cheap.
Quality, you know.
Depends what, you know, I have a pretty considerable doll budget, so.
You wouldn't want to keep playing.
The record of the town does not have a doll budget. We do not buy dolls.
All right. Do we have a?
Eric came in and signed it.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the transient vendor license for Wendy Collins on October 1st, 2023, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Doll Bear and Miniature Show at the Sturbridge Host Hotel.
I'll second. All those in favor? Great. All right, guys. So then last action item, consideration and possible action on the appointment of Eli Garrett, Mike Dobos, and Nate Lane as associate members of the Trails Committee.
These names all came to me through the Trails Committee, both recommended by Brandon Goodwin and Tom Chamberlain. Two of the three gave a little bit more background than the third, but they all came highly recommended by Trails, and I'm not gonna argue with that committee.
And I think Chase and I have known Nate since about two, for about 25 years now. So we're good.
I try, that committee does such good work. If they say these people are okay, I'm gonna trust them on it.
So, all right, do I have a motion?
So moved.
All those in favor? Or second, second. All those in favor? The ayes have it. Okay. And so then we're going back to old business on the Hamilton Road E1 pump, about the, what is it? Hundred and?
Eleven.
Eleven dollars and 78 cents. You know, I had, the one thing I did sort of kind of return to is being billed a year later is a little.
It's not, though. It's not.
It's not.
No, it's not. It's two months.
It's two months.
So the work was performed on April 26, 2023. The bill was June 28, 2023.
So eight weeks.
Because the year later.
Yeah, that, if that had been the case, I wouldn't.
I'm still gonna, I mean, unless somebody is told, look, I mean, I know it was an emergency situation, but they need to be told upfront, look, if we come now, we're gonna charge you overtime for our work. If we come tomorrow on our regular hours and you have it cleaned up, then we're not going to charge you. It's your decision. But you don't do the work and then turn around and charge overtime when that resident wasn't aware that they had a choice.
I don't know that he was or wasn't.
I know, but I.
Well, that's sort of our issue.
I would, I think, I would be very surprised if they went and said, we're gonna do it. It's gonna be overtime, and we're charging you. And he said, or if she said, come on and do it, and then look to be reimbursed.
I guess, I guess my question is, I'm still confused what the work was. Was it clearing out over the E1 pump, or was it fixing it?
But, well, the work was fixing it.
Fixing it.
He had to clear it, and he could not clear it in time during the day, and it needed to be repaired.
So the hundred and eleven dollars is to fix the pump?
Is to fix, well.
To clear it out.
To fix the pump on overtime. Yes.
Now, what happened, from my understanding, is he didn't have it cleared out during regular op time. If he did, they wouldn't have charged him.
Right.
But they said, we've got to come in overtime. And I'm saying, was that told upfront to these residents?
Well, when they.
Or, or did they have the choice of having it done the following day and just not using their pump? Just, I know if I were given that choice, I'd say, you know what? I'll wait. Tomorrow, you come in. And I don't think this, I would be very surprised if this resident said, yes, we will pay. Come in overtime, we'll pay the town back, and then now looks to be reimbursed. And so I think that they were kind of blindsided, and I think they should be refund. I don't think we should charge them overtime.
My issue is when you have an E1 pump, you gotta keep it clear. That's, you know it when you have it. If you own a home that has an E1 pump, it's gotta be cleared all the time.
Right. But the point is, they did clear it to be repaired. Now they just want to charge for the overtime to repair it.
That's.
Because it wasn't cleared during the regular workday. But what I'm saying is, okay, on Monday, I didn't have it cleared. Why don't you come in on Tuesday or Wednesday?
It's supposed to be clear all the time.
I know, but, but, but the point is, our town went in and charged them overtime. What we should say is, look, it's not cleared. We can't do it today. We'll schedule it during we should say is, look, it's not cleared. We can't do it today. We'll schedule it during our regular time, or we'll come in overtime and it's on you.
I'm not always sure we can leave it if it's not functioning, though. I mean, that's a public health issue.
Because it's a public-
It's their sun pump. They just don't use it.
No, the E1 pump is, it's not a sun pump. It's a contained, it's to contain the water for the runoff.
Yeah.
Pumps out to the-
It's a different, it's a different, the point remains-
The point is, you got to be put on notice. We're going to charge you overtime or make sure it's cleared during the regular work week. I can, I fully understand why the town couldn't go in that day. And I'm not putting it on the town to clean, clear it. I'm simply saying, they've got to be told, look, it's not clear. We're not coming in until it is. And then it's on the town's time. But to charge them overtime to do it that day when they weren't put on notice, I think is unreasonable. I do.
Well, they were also, they also notified the town on working hours.
What do you mean, Mary? I'm sorry.
Mr. Maher, he notified the town during working hours.
Okay.
And for whatever reason, I don't know if they went there or they didn't go there.
As I understand, they went there, said they can't get to it. He had to clean it.
Right.
Oh, and then they had to, so he's supposed to keep it clean the whole time.
The policy is that they're always supposed to be accessible.
So they're always supposed to be clear. It was not accessible. The town, he, then it was delayed. And then, and he's alleging that he wasn't billed contemporaneously. We're saying that he was.
You have us against.
Yeah, yeah. Well, no, I'm not, it doesn't, just because we sent it to him, too, doesn't mean.
No, he was, no, he was billed overtime because they had to go after hours.
I get that part. Listen, I, I will gladly take a motion on this particular issue unless somebody has anything else to say.
I mean, here's my just two cents. I agree. It's $111. Like, we don't want to split here. If you were supposed to keep it clear, it wasn't clear.
On you.
That's-
Well, yes, that's, that's, that's fair.
So I'm just going to make a motion even if it's defeated. Did he pay this, did this resident pay? Yes.
Has he paid it?
Yes, his total pay.
Yep. Did he pay it? He wants it refunded, I believe.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion that we refund the overtime charges at 17 Old Hamilton Road.
Yeah, all right, I'll second. Killing me, Mary. But it's, I assume, if, this is, you know, it's $112. I'm assuming the town did nothing wrong. I am seconding it because this gentleman is particularly vehement and without precedent, prejudice or present to doing something differently before. But given the relatively de minimis amount of money, so goes.
Talking like a true attorney.
All right.
No, it's a relatively small amount. But, you know, the first mistake was Mr. Maher not clearing the thing. The second mistake happened, we don't know how, you know, whether the town, you know, contacted him and said, we can't come till after hours or whatever.
I hear you, Mary. I'm a 5149 on this, but, because Slack person Dowling felt so strongly about it, I thought support.
I just like the town to be upfront. We're going to come. We're coming after hours and you're going to pay.
No, I, I hear, I hear you. And I get Chase's point about the covers, and I'd probably be less sympathetic to these issues going forward, however.
Plus, he had his wrong informations, you know, saying it was a year.
I, I hear you. So anyways, we have, we have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? There it is. So-
It's 2-2. It dies, actually.
It just dies. Yep. So-
I don't know the votes. I will.
And then-
I would like to say that before, just for the record, since this is under old business, anybody listening, if you have an E1 pump, it is always to be clear. I don't know whether the town will, has specifically notified. I will tell Shane, if this ever happens again, they are to let the people know. In the event that we didn't, I don't know that we didn't. But in the event that we didn't, they are to be known that if we have to come back after hours, that there is billing. And that there are times that we do have to come back, whether they want us to or not.
Sure.
Because we can't let these fail.
I 100% agree with that. That makes perfect sense.
Okay, so let's just have that on the record.
But I also think we should probably, when we send out our next round of bills to the people with those pumps, considering that these pumps are going to be a point of larger conversation as well.
Yes.
That that we could do a gentle reminder to everybody to keep their E1 pumps clear. So going forward, if your E1 pump is not cleared, this board will be less sympathetic than it is today.
And I will put that on social media as well and get that information out there. I think that's important.
Ooh, ha ha.
All right.
I'll probably ask you who has to say, listen, clean and clean your pumps.
In order, it's like, man down. So anyway, Slack person. So, anyway, moving on to any other, okay, old business. Chase, you have any old business?
I have no, thank you.
Mary, old business?
Yes.
Okay.
How's the pool client administrative assistant working out?
From what I'm initially hearing, well, I'm hearing positive from our staff. The public has interacted with her several times. We had a couple of times where that building was empty and, other than her, and she handled issues. She's getting the idea of a lot of the building inspection stuff, able to help Cindy a good bit with, Cindy's not there or something's going on. Cindy's tied up. She's been able to get the proper forms for people. She was able to look up a fine or a fee that somebody had for them. So she's ramping up very quickly. I have heard nothing but positive, even in regards to her personality and interacting. She's still going through trainings with each of the departments. But, you know, we had, for example, some AED training here Friday morning. She stayed there so that everybody from that building could come over here, and we didn't have people walking into a vacant building last Friday morning. So, so far, so good. From everything we're hearing, so far, so good.
And I see the parking lots coming along.
Yes.
Yes, and it's a-
Yes, that's very exciting. That's a project. I will be doing, I have an update on our webpage. I started putting capital projects update going back for town meetings like five years going forward, the status of all-town meeting warrant for capital-type projects. Because people vote things and then they never hear what happens to them. So I have a link under special projects on the website. I'm due to update that again because things like the parking lot are moving forward. But, you know, something that might have gotten voted in 2018, people say, well, whatever happened to blah, blah, blah? Oh, it's been done. Or it's in progress, or it got delayed because of COVID, or, you know, whatever it might be. So I have a spreadsheet up there. It's an Excel spreadsheet. I just need to remember to keep up, updating it. But the parking lot is one that I need to, I'm looking forward to updating.
Are we almost, the end, the drainage and everything?
I, I, I know there's hope that by the end of fall, this will be complete before the season sets in. So that's good. We also, there was a lot of discussion on, speaking of drainage, if I could just drift very quickly while we're doing old business. The Route 20, there's been discussion. It got out on Facebook. There was some confusion that it was going to be closed until Monday morning. DOT is doing some work in front of the Yankee Spirits Yankee Pedaler, the Big Dig, Sturbridge's Big Dig, the Big Dig West or Central. And there is going to be a road closure Saturday night into Sunday morning. We met with DOT. We told them that's the best night of the week to do it, after 9:00 on a Saturday, and have it open by Sunday morning. It will not be closed into Monday. There was some misinformation out there. I popped out over the weekend on Facebook and was trying to correct it. And then I forgot to say who I was, and someone's like, well, how do you know? I'm on my Robyn Grim page, and I was like, I'm sorry. So anyway, that will be done. We have worked with public safety. We will actually have an ambulance staged on the other side so there will not be a danger for response time. We'll be able to have that ambulance one have to drive around. We'll get a first responder and a truck right out to it. So both chiefs have signed off on this being okay.
And I noticed you have it on the-
Yes.
On the, whatever you call it, digital sign.
The flashy board there. Yes, yeah.
You mean they took down the one with the lights? Two days, two days after the fog.
Oh, yeah, headland song, headland.
Somebody's entertaining what's up there. I don't know who's got the sense of humor over there. Somebody's got a sense of humor.
Which is foggy day or not foggy day anymore. Like, in their defense, I could see one, like, I'm like, I don't know, it was raining yesterday.
It's foggy over here, but it's not foggy in-
Hey, listen, I actually met the guy, like whoever does it for DOT. They have a central office up, up in, where was I, Fitchburg or somewhere? And I actually met the guy, like the guy who changes the signs. I was like, how cool is this? Like, that is the coolest job of all. The person who could put all sorts of stuff out there, really mess everybody up.
Not really what I think the coolest job is, but I hear you.
I could have fun with that. Let's just say I could have fun with that.
All right. So, and I have, unless there's any other old business, I have none. Anything else? Nope. Okay.
Oh, I, I have one more thing, sorry.
No, it's fine.
When you do the update on the website for the sheltered families and-
Yes.
whatever you're going to put, can you just start by saying, because this way, I can just tell everyone to go on the website. For those of you who would like to volunteer and donate anything, please contact me.
Yeah.
And I will get you in touch with the National Guard.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep.